Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:02. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. So this is our first budget workshop and we have specific items that we're going to be focusing on tonight, which is mostly the schools' curriculum and special services. And then we have another budget workshop next Wednesday and then TBD on a third one. So I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Cummings to do an introduction and get us started right away.
Here we go. Thanks, Tammy. So, welcome, everyone. So, the way that we conduct these budget workshops is essentially we're going to give a broad overview of major programs and any significant changes in budgets year over year. If members of the committee have questions about specific programs or after reviewing, I know you've had the budgets for a few days. If you have questions about any specific line items or along those ways, you know, we welcome those questions and are happy to talk through them. But we're not going to go through kind of line by line. And each presentation is just meant to kind of give a big idea of how the budget is used within each program. And like I said, we can certainly get into the weeds on any specific item that you all would like more information about, all right? And with that, I'd like to hand it over to Gail, our curriculum director, who's going to give an overview of our curriculum budget.
Good evening, everyone. So you can see the slide up on the screen. And I'm just going to quickly go through what our focus is for the curriculum department. Some of these areas are specifically in the budget lines and some are just programs or committees that we coordinate in the curriculum department that are covered with the curriculum department salaries. So, some of the budget lines encompass district professional development. So this would mean if we had an outside agency come in to do any professional development for the staff, I have a line for that in our budget. So in the past, we have used these monies for Building Thinking Classroom professional development or Right to Read or any other PD that we felt that we wanted our staff to participate in. The majority of my budget is for Curriculum Academy. So as you know, each year, the two or three days after school gets out, we have a Curriculum Academy where the principals and I and the curriculum team come up with specific curriculum projects that need to be done for the district. And we send out an invitation for teachers to apply to come to Curriculum Academy and complete the projects. And they get paid their hourly rate for coming to the academy and completing the projects during the time period. So that's a majority of my budget. Some other areas that we work on, we have vertical articulation team meetings, which encompass representation from all three schools by content. And we convene once a year to make sure that what we have on the curriculum page is up to date. We go over what the content areas are doing by grade level. We talk about any materials they may need, any professional development. So that's done throughout the year with the curriculum team and myself. We also sometimes coordinate instructional rounds. This year, many of those rounds have been based on Building Thinking classrooms, which I hope to do a presentation on later in the year. But instructional rounds are when a team goes into classrooms and we have a problem of practice that we're looking for. And we go in and we gather data and then we come back and we talk about what we've seen and we make some plans for professional development or suggestions to the staff of how we can improve in that particular area. Also, we have a committee called Curriculum and Professional Development Committee and we meet twice a year. And that, once again, has representatives from all three schools where we serve it, it's kind of like a think tank where we talk about, how do you think the professional development's going? What would you like more of? What would you like less of? What worked? What didn't work? So that convenes twice a year as well. And that is under the curriculum department as well. We also spend, we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of years with new curriculum material pilots. As you know, we are required to by RIDE to pick from a list of high-quality curriculum materials. So we look at that list, but then we do a pretty significant pilot with a couple of those vendors. So this year, our focus was health materials for the high school. And next year probably will be science. And then just some other things that we work on that are guided by the curriculum team, building curriculum units for the staff and for the stakeholders, updating the curriculum webpage, all the grants, the title, one, two, one, two, three, one, two, four, Grants for RIDE and the audits that we sometimes have to do that RIDE requires us to do for the grants. We're in the middle of one right now. Keeping track of the RIDE textbook list and the high-quality curriculum material updates for RIDE. Coaching cycles. This is a big one. We have coaching cycles for new staff, staff that are changing grade levels or content areas. And also staff can sign up for coaching cycles if they have something that they need help with. So that's a big push through the curriculum department that we're quite proud of. We also gather data for our staff from the state assessments and we present that to all of you and also for the teachers back in the buildings. We coordinate the survey works, surveys for the district and then getting the data pumped out so that we can really look at it and make decisions based on that data. And finally, new staff orientation. So we have one of our coaches who is a part-time new staff coach. And she and I coordinate the new staff PD in the beginning of the year when they are hired and then support them throughout the year as well. So that's just a snapshot. It's not everything, but kind of like the big focus areas. And once again, a lot of the budget lines, if you were to look at them individually, are on the professional development and the Curriculum Academy for the district.
And I'll just note, you know, a lot of the work that Gail is doing, you'll remember that at our last meeting when I presented the budget, I talked a lot about the mandates that we get from RIDE that are unfunded, right? And so a lot of the work that Gail does is often in response to something that RIDE has asked for us to do. So for example, developing new curricula in literally every subject area, right? You know, is something that was mandated by RIDE with little to no funding, right? That the towns and schools have had to absorb. And that's a lot of the work that they have done. So when Gail talks about a coaching cycle, that's really around working with individual teachers or small groups of teachers in order for them to learn how to teach the new curricula in the most effective way possible, right? And so a lot of our work, it's not just getting the new materials. It's all then the learning and the professional development and the kind of fine tuning of those materials into our narrative setting, making sure that it meets our standards of rigor and has high engagement with our students. And that means often we have to refine that curriculum and kind of repackage it in a way that works the best for our students. So that's a big part of the curriculum office. And then they gather all of that data, analyze that data so that we know very specifically which students need help, which areas of curriculum need more refinement, what we're doing well at and kind of can do more of, right? Where are areas where we need to think more deeply about what standards we're hitting and all of those pieces. And so, you know, Gail works really closely with the instructional coaches. I will say, we are very fortunate to have very expert and very dedicated instructional coaches that have made tremendous impact on just how we're thinking about teaching and learning. And their work and the willingness of our teachers to work with them closely to have really innovative teaching and learning is amazing. And so we often have other districts come here just to see what we're doing and the level of kind of compliments that we get for the work of our teachers are doing and our coaches are doing with our teachers. You know, we're having people request to come and see how we're doing it.
So are there any questions?
Yeah, any questions from any committee members?
I have a question about the vertical articulation teams. In the summer Curriculum Academy, do they identify areas that need further work in terms of through the year, like if there's a gap between, you know, five and six or eight and nine?
Yes, yes. So that can happen in a couple of different venues. It could be during a vertical articulation team meeting where we would, we would talk about what we need. And sometimes those meetings are just once a year and we say, oh, no, we just got material. And sometimes those meetings are just once a year and we say, oh, no, we just got materials. We're good. The website's good. But then there are other years that, like for example, in social studies, we had our VAT team meeting last year, but then we realized we needed to meet multiple times to plan how we're going to start rolling in the new social studies standards. So sometimes it turns into more after that. And then if we can't finish it within the year, it might turn into a Curriculum Academy project.
And how is the state doing on getting some high-level science curriculum approved?
So, that's interesting. I just had a meeting with RIDE today. They are trying to get a one-year adjustment because right now it says we have to have it in place for next year. And it has to go through the legislature right now. So it's about halfway through. We'll see if we get the adjustment for another year. I think we will. We piloted Open Siad in the middle school this year, which is one on the list. And the teachers liked it, so we are going to go with Open Siad for the middle school. But right now, there's just not enough to look at for elementary and high. So, to be continued, I guess.
Well, it sounds like they've made some progress, so that's good.
My question is probably more for Pete. So, in what department does the summer school programming live in? Is it like ESY, special education, is going to be in special services, credit recovery at the high school, but any other? Are those the only, the two types of learning that is offered in the summer? Is the ESY for students with disabilities and credit recovery at the high school?
It is. So we, you know, we have offered different courses in the past. The beach seems to be more appealing, the summer school, to many of our students. And so we do have a hard time getting enrollment in summer programs. But we do, you know, certainly fulfill kind of our obligations for students who may have had challenges during the school year and need to pass something in order to move on to the next grade. So we provide opportunities for that. And the ESY as we're required to for the special ed. So those, that's the bulk of the program.
I just want to thank Gail. Did you want to, you want to go next, Justin? Yeah.
Pete alluded to it and you mentioned it. RIDE has asked us to do kind of like a full breakdown of all our curriculum and to update it. How far along are we on that process? Is this a, it seems to me like since I've been on here, RIDE every year has asked us to redo something again.
Yeah, we're actually in really good shape because we've had the high-quality math curriculum in place for maybe four years or so. And right now, we have all of our ELA high-quality materials in place. Science, we have what we can have in place because it's just not available to middle and high. They actually don't have high-quality materials that we have to select for social studies and world languages, but we are always updating. You know, the teachers, like we don't have materials that are decades old, you know, for any of our content areas.
I remember this vaguely with, they don't have a lot of options right now and they're working towards it. So, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So the recommendations are only for English, math, and science?
At this time, yes.
And they're not doing history or social studies?
They have a list for social studies of recommendations, but you don't have to select from that list.
Would they consider those high-quality?
Not through ed reports, but through RIDE's, whatever, however they determined.
RIDE has a social studies steering committee, for lack of a better word, you know, advisory committee. And that committee, that's some materials that they then suggest to the districts. So, I mean, to get really into the weeds, RIDE approved new Rhode Island social studies standards that were, you know, relatively different than some of the national standards and kind of mixed up where elements of history were covered in different grade levels and kind of jumbled that all around. And so, there's some consternation around matching materials with the Rhode Island-specific standards that is very, that are different than a lot of the other states. And there are not too many textbook companies that are creating books just for Rhode Island. And so that is part of the reason why there's some mismatch there.
I just had a question in terms of the science. So if you don't hear in time, do you just stay the course?
Yeah.
And I know you guys work really hard. I've watched it in progress.
Yeah, I mean, we're not the only ones in this, in this boat, for sure. I mean, today, RIDE said that they might have some monies to do a pilot of a couple of units at the high school level for Open Siad. And we had the science fellow come down and speak to the science teachers at the high school who are interested in that if it, if it's available. Because why not try it out, especially if we don't have to pay for the pilot? But, yeah, it's just not, they're just not approved yet, so, yeah.
So, I have just one question that I ask every year that I'm going to ask all the other guests that are coming up tonight. And so, Gail, is there anything that's not in your current budget that you think would be of value to consider? That's additional, that's not in your recommended budget line items?
I have to say no. I think we're good. I think we're good. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I appreciate all of your hard work and then really your vision with all the curriculum cycles and everything. I think that's great.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Any other questions for Gail before we move on? Okay, all right. Pete, next.
Great. I'd like to invite up Melissa and Jill for special services.
Hello, thank you for having us. I usually start by talking about what the Office of Student Services is because it's so much more than special education in our district. I am considered the director and Jill is considered the assistant director, but probably between the two of us, you have one special ed administrator because we both take on jobs that go far beyond special education. So I serve as the district's special ed administrator, 504 coordinator. I'm in charge of multilingual learners in our district, homeless students, students who are involved in foster care. And then I also am in charge, or LEA, for all students that are in out-of-district placements. Jill serves a very important role of the assistant director in special education, but probably bigger pieces of her role is she is the early childhood coordinator. And you know that our preschool is a great asset to this district. And she's also our district multi-tier system of support coordinator. I've added a few reminders to this slide just because sometimes not everybody is aware that what we do in the world of special education is really all controlled by federal law and state regulations. And so, all of our students are entitled to a free, appropriate public education in their least restrictive environment. So we use a lot of jargon in the world of special ed, so I'll sort of break that down for you. No matter what a child's disability is and what a child needs in order to access their education, it is Narragansett's responsibility to provide it at no cost to the family. And we need to do it in the least restrictive environment, which means where they would be educated if they didn't have a disability. So it's our responsibility as an IEP team to review what the student's disability is through evaluations, find a child eligible, and develop a plan. But then we need to think about where would that child be educated if they didn't have a disability with their peers? And then we have to exhaust all supports that we could possibly put in, such as specially-designed instruction or supplemental aids or special equipment or adaptions. And then, only then do we provide a service in a more restrictive setting, such as a small classroom with just students with IEPs. In some situations, very few situations within our district, the public school setting is no longer appropriate for a student. In order to keep that student safe and other students safe around them, they may need a more clinical setting that has greater behavioral supports. And at that point, it's our responsibility to find that, that school, make sure it's RIDE-certified, and then pay the tuition and the transportation that's assigned to that. So I'm very involved in that with the school administrators and the teachers. I think it's also important to know, and if you ask me some questions, hopefully I can answer them all. But occasionally, I do have to say I'm not able to answer that. We're such a small district that anything that has an N size of less than 10 students, we're really not supposed to talk about because then it could become identifiable. And so confidentiality is very important in all of our work, but especially in the work of special education. And then my final reminder is that although we are the directors, we don't make the decisions. The law says that IEP teams make the decision and the parents are part of that along with the teachers, the related service providers, and so forth. And so, we certainly facilitate that work. In our district, we're fortunate enough that there are only three of us, Lauren being the third one of us, who ever facilitate an IEP meeting. Now, in a big district, you would never have that. But we're very fortunate because we can have tremendous consistency in our district because there's three of us that are monitoring services and compliance for students in special education. So I've provided you some data that I've given you over the years. And so this shows you the percentage of students that are eligible for special education. You will notice that the state increased and so did we slightly. That may be because of coming off of COVID still, but our numbers have stayed very consistent. We, through the great work of Jill and our building administrators, work really hard to make sure that students are provided the interventions that they need before there's suspicion of disability so that we're not finding a student eligible for special education when it's truly just something that they need additional support or instruction on. Each year, and I know it may seem sort of early, but I think really in early December, we start moving students from their current grade to the next grade. And we begin looking at, we have a lot of spreadsheets. And we begin looking at what are the anticipated services that will be needed. And we work closely with our building administrators. We look at what additional supports and services and staffing those students will need. And then based on that, we make our projected staffing request to both Dr. Cummings and Karen. And so you'll see that the elementary K through four will remain very similar in enrollment, knowing that this number does not include the preschool or our speech and language-only students who work with just our speech and language pathologists. In looking at all of our student needs and knowing that some of our preschoolers are moving to kindergarten, we do anticipate that we're going to be able to reduce by two paraprofessionals next year. But we will still maintain all services that students need. So if anyone's listening, no one should be concerned that services won't be provided. You're going to see here that I've written five preschool teachers. I think in a little while, during the elementary presentation, you might hear more about preschool. And I am recommending that we maintain the same special education staffing. We need that in order to meet the needs. When you look at the middle school, our enrollment of students with IEPs is decreasing. And so, we work very closely with Emily and have made the determination that we can cut a half-time special educator. And she's also, and maybe she'll talk about this, she is going to also reduce a half-time behavior support person, which is the equivalent of one person. And then, we will continue to have two, three special educators, one with five, six, one with seven, eight. And then we have one that works with the students with more intensive needs. The high school is always hard for me to predict. I can kind of come up with an estimate, but we're still in the process of accepting CTE students and Jamestown students. Actually, I'm doing a tour next week for a large group of Jamestown students. So we'll have that final number. But we are ready and working with NHS administration and my department heads in special ed at the high school already know, for example, how many students need geometry with a special educator in it? How many students need English 11 and so forth? And so, we began working on that. Due to the new secondary regulations, I've been working very closely with our building administration at the high school to make sure that we are providing the right coursework and the right support and instruction for all students so that every student has the right to earn a Narragansett High School diploma. So some of the things that we've been able to do within the staffing that we have without asking for any extra, is this year, we started to support biology and chemistry because those are going to be, are now required in order to graduate with a diploma. We also are really encouraging all students to sign up for CTE programs. And we know that some of our students may need a little extra instruction in order to be able to be successful in those. And so we've been able to take some of our special ed staffing and start supporting our mechanical trades and our agriculture programs. So all students, no matter their significance of their disability on their education, can still access those courses. And then we'll continue with our transition program. I know you know quite a bit about that. So the other two major cuts that we have proposed to Dr. Cummings and Karen is that our physical therapist, Donna Wallace, has been with us, I think, for a long time. I don't know if I can define how many years, but a long time. She is retiring and we will miss her. But to be fiscally responsible and rather than hiring a new physical therapist, we are going to contract with an agency. That allows us to have flexibility. So as our enrollment and our needs change, we can adjust the hours, which it's harder to do that with a paid employee that's through our union. So, we have already started that process. We've actually already interviewed and we're working on contracting once we get the approval from this budget. And then, we have been very blessed that over the last two years, the school committee did allow us in our district to have what some may view as an extra school psychologist. We've had two school psychologists at our high school, which I think has been really helpful as we've come out of the pandemic and we've addressed the mental health needs of our students. But as we know that this budget process, there were some very tough decisions that needed to be made. And, you know, we feel very blessed to have a full-time school psychologist in all three of our schools. And so at this time, we are reducing one full-time school psychologist in Narragansett. And if you have any questions for us, I know that preschool will be talked about more in Lisa's report, I believe.
I do have a question on the intensive special educator. Does that mean a special educator that works one-on-one?
No, so in the state of, well, it's actually national, but we'll talk about the state of Rhode Island. We have students who are considered due to the severity of their disability. Often their cognitive profile, their ability for their adaptive skills, their daily living skills, that qualify for alternate assessment and an alternate set of standards. So they do not participate in the general education curriculum for the core academics. They do for electives and they do to participate for other reasons for science and social studies. But their core academics are done using alternate learning standards. And so, we do have a group of students at our middle school, our high school, and actually at our elementary school that all qualify for that. And so, their programming looks a little bit different and the certification of that teacher is slightly different also.
So I think that's a great question, Diane. And I just want to kind of emphasize, for those watching at home as well, is that these are required services, right? And so, even if and even when, for us, there are one or two students, right, that require more intensive services, we can't have one person service the needs of those children and be in three buildings, right? Because the needs of those children require someone with them for the majority of the day. And so, we're legally bound to have a teacher. And then the teacher-to-student ratio in those cases is very, very small, right? But there's just no logistical or legal way, right, for us to kind of split that responsibility. And so, you know, at times, you know, we will face critique about student-to-teacher ratio or kind of those types of things. You know, often, it's the legal requirements that we're forced to face and doing the right thing by children, right? Often with significant disabilities that require that level of care and intervention, that we have to dedicate staff to that, right? And so that's really an important thing to remember, that you have to look at the regulatory and legal framework in which we have to operate to make sense of the budget at times.
Although I don't really need it. So I understand the need to reduce the psychologist at the high school. Having one is, seems enough. But do they have a plan in terms of addressing some of the high school needs? Like looking outwards to some of the outreach, like Washington County Coalition or anything like that?
So we'll continue our partnership with Thunder Mist. We have that grant for an additional school year. And I know that probably when we're here next year, we'll be talking about how we're going to sustain it within our budget and Thunder Mist is going to hopefully do the same. And then we're very fortunate that we have three schools that are not that far apart. We have three very talented, we have four right now, but three very talented school psychologists. And they do a nice job supporting one another. And so, for example, Dr. Kimpton, who's at the high school, he has, he's a neuroclinical psychologist. So he has a different credential than most school psychologists. And so he's often consulting, he can do evaluations for us. And so we will continue to have them all work together to support the needs of our students. I mean, Dr. Cummings probably would be happy, but you know, would we have loved? Has he heard more than he wants to hear? That we would love to keep our fourth school psychologist? Absolutely. But we also know that cuts need to be made. Our size of our district is, you know, reducing. And so to be responsible, that is a position that is nice to have, but not required at this time.
Yeah, respecting your N equals 10. Could you give me the percent of, in our preschool, like over the years, not any particular year? What do you find the percent of preschool students needing special ed services and those who do not? Is it like 80/20 or 50/50 or what would you say?
So it does vary. So it does vary year to year. This year, we have, I would say, more students that require intensive support right now in preschool. But moving forward for next year, it's, I think I have three or four that have required services.
But it's probably under 25% of students. What you, what you find in preschool is that a large number of the students who are eligible for special education actually receive speech and language services. And then there are others who have developmental delays and other disabilities that would qualify for services. So we do have, we see students coming through our preschool and then they move on to kindergarten. And so the numbers constantly are changing. But yes, it's a smaller percentage. We're very fortunate to have a very highly inclusive preschool opportunity for our students.
And I think, Diane, it's a great question. One of the things we've also seen in the data is compared to before, when we compare kind of our identification rates in elementary school now versus before we had full-day preschool, we do see a lower rate of students being identified for special education services. And we, the research would tell you, and we see the proof in this, is that because we have a full-day preschool that is very well thought out with a, you know, highly regarded curriculum and the right supports, students are not developing a need for additional services in first, second, third grade at the same rate as they were before we were able to do these early interventions. So while not all students in preschool will present enough of a learning need to be identified for being in need of special education services, often, you know, we do see students that have a relative deficit or relative strength. And because we're doing these early intervention models, those relative deficits do not then develop into a need for specialized instruction. So that's really been a great outcome of having that.
And I would add that, you know, Jill does an amazing job through our early intervention. She starts working with literally babies and their families, you know, I think at two and a half, right? You start home visits at two and a half. And so unlike other districts who kindergarten, students are walking into school for the very first time, there's a lot of referrals that happen during kindergarten and first grade. By the time our students reach kindergarten, we know them so well, their families know us, and everything is already in place for them because we're blessed to have them at a very young age. They could, they start legally by their third birthday if they're eligible for services.
What we are seeing, and this is true across the state, and I do hear this from fellow superintendents, is that, you know, the needs of many of our students are increasing in severity, right? And so, you know, when we say that we do need the intensive teacher, for example, you know, these are students who really do need some significant intervention in order to kind of develop the skills so that they can self-regulate and be in class. And so there's lots that, you know, our, our team does, you know, Jill, Melissa, Lisa, Tracy, you know, the whole elementary and preschool team does a lot of work of working with families, working with these very young children to get them ready to learn. And so, you know, the, we are seeing, when we compare our experiences with other districts, their kindergarten, their first grade, we're seeing less disruption in our K1, 2 because we are able to work with families and work with kids, you know, at this earlier age.
Got a quick question for Pete and then my standard question for Melissa. Pete, what's the deadline for out-of-district students to apply to our CTE program for the high school?
That would be Saturday, March 1st.
Okay, March 1st. And then is there a firm deadline for the Jamestown kids when they're, if they're picking Narragansett or North Kingstown? Or is it somewhat flexible or is it, there's supposed to?
Because of our partnership with Jamestown, that's a bit more flexible. You know, we work with them to make sure that, you know, if they do have any interest in Narragansett, they come, they tour, they're able to pick their classes. We work with the guidance counselors there. So that, because of that partnership, it's not just a CTE partnership. The deadline is not as strict, but we do like to know as soon as possible so we can get them in the right classes.
Okay. And I work closely with the director in Jamestown. And so I have an idea of how many students have IEPs that are in the eighth grade class. So I know what the total amount might be if they all chose to come here. So, but we work very closely on when families are making those decisions. And I do highly encourage them to make it sooner rather than later to help us with our scheduling process.
And then, you know, same question, and it's really not, you know, not this year like what would be beneficial and helpful. It's really, you know, as you have to make some really hard staffing decisions, you know, is, with what you're presenting now, is there anything that, you know, you really are concerned or worried about that didn't go through? Not looking for, oh, this would be nice or helpful or beneficial, but something that is not in the budget that you're kind of very worried or concerned about?
So I wouldn't put forth a budget that would make us not be in compliance because it's just not who I am. So I'm very confident that with the funds that are currently in these lines, that we can be in full compliance. But better than that, we can ensure that our students have full access to their education. And I will share with you that I am fully supportive of the recommendations that my colleagues are going to make, but I'll let them make those recommendations. We work very closely as a team. And so I know some of the things that they're going to ask for, which we are very supportive of.
All right, thank you. Do any other school community members have any questions about special services? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next, oops. Next, we'd like to welcome up Principal Fiori, Chris Fiori, and Assistant Principal Connor McCloskey. So welcome, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. As you could see on the slide, I'm going to have to have a little PD on your slide-making abilities from Melissa. And hopefully she can help us out for next year. But so you have here in front of you basically the ebb and flow where we try to, again, balance what's fiscally responsible for our, our community members and also being able to put out a product that, you know, we're proud of and that achieves the same level of rigor and expectation that we always have, at the same time trying to enhance what we do. So these are some of the things that really made up our budget. Some are going to be positives, some are negatives from a financial standpoint, just to see where we are going to arrive. The underlying philosophy, of course, is always that we want to maintain our student-centered approach. Students have to be at the center of the educational process. And the decisions that we make should be for our students and that should be our first priority. A lot of the decisions we make are based on the RIDE graduation requirements, which came out last year for the class of 2028 and beyond. So right now, it's our current freshmen. As we move into next year, it'll be half of our building, our freshmen and our sophomores. So continuing to balance those and making sure that we're addressing their needs and getting them where they want to be by the time they leave us. Obviously, increasing their opportunities to access and rigor is something that we've continued to do. Everything that we've done this year with building thinking classrooms and a lot of the PD that Gail mentioned in regards to that, just addressing a lot of those needs. Again, that's something that's going to continue. We've been able to kind of work that into the budget, you know, through our FTE, through our materials and supplies and things of that nature. Falling underneath that are the classes that students choose to take. So we're, believe it or not, continuing to massage the classes by getting the data from the students and from the staff about what's going to best prepare them for when they leave us. And so we've able to add to our course selection process this year. AP Macroeconomics, a foundations of education class in the Ed Prep CTE. Advanced Marine Tech, which is another one of our maritime classes. Digital Media 3, which is a third class in our Digital Media CTE program. And Honors Spanish and Honors French IV, those are two separate classes. We found that a number of students, to be quite honest, don't want to go right into an AP track. But they feel a little bit more comfortable in an honors-level track. And that was actually preventing them from moving forward. And, you know, taking four years of a language is something that if students are applying to competitive colleges, they need to have that on their resume to remain competitive at that level. So we wanted to make sure that we were offering that and making sure we're taking care of those students. We had some adjustments in the computer science courses. Just some changing in some of the wording and some of the curricula, just to sort of, again, update it, make sure it's adhering to the standards for the state and then as well, making it accessible to the students. So little things about AI and data and things like that, we just made some of those adjustments. We usually put students in a class in their freshman year to kind of take care of that. And so that was one of the reasons why. It'll satisfy a computer science elective for the graduation requirements. And it's also a springboard into some more courses where people might choose to go in that direction. We added a painting course as well in the art department. We are redesigning one of our classrooms into a larger computer lab. They're, because of some of the courses that our students are taking in computers and they're getting to that high level that they need, they just need certain features in a computer lab that we were starting to outgrow a little bit. And then when you couple, our robotics program is burgeoning. And, you know, as you remember, I think you remember from last year, we were able to send some people over the summer, you know, to compete on a national level. So that was amazing. And so we're trying to keep that going as well. And, you know, that's something that Julio has been a major part of along with Dr. Cummings and Steve Gormly. So we were talking about all of those with the, with the teachers. Mr. McCloskey was a big part of it. So we have something that's pretty well-defined that we're going to be able to really take the students into the future and prepare them probably for some jobs that don't even exist yet. We've tried to maintain consistent CTE support. We were able to add the sports medicine athletic training CTE program. Mr. McCloskey worked feverishly to get that done. And, you know, it's an amazing job and a credit to him that he was able to kind of get that in for next year and really kind of expedite that whole process because RIDE had really slowed down their approval process. So we've had a number of students who are looking at that program. We had a large number of students in the building who want to access that first-year course. So that's, that's certainly going to be a big draw. We're looking at redesigning some of the Mariner classes to SAT prep classes and balancing what we do for the freshmen as sort of like, like an initiation into the high school and then for the seniors to kind of like get them ready with college and all those things. At the same time, making sure that we emphasize the SATs. Not simply because it's a Rhode Island State Accountability Measure, but everyone's taking it. Everyone can benefit from it. Doesn't matter if they're going into the military, to the workforce, a two-year school, four-year school, doesn't matter. So we hope to recognize some gains in that regard. So we're trying to build that and fix that right now because we're in the master scheduling process. So we're playing around with that as well. Again, maintaining the staffing that's necessary to not just support but enhance instruction. I think this seems to be a popular refrain in schools and in education. My whole career, I've always heard of it and it's always, you know, we want you to do more with less, you know? And that's just a credit to our staff, you know, that they've been willing and able, and it starts with Mr. McCloskey at the top, you know, being able to take on responsibilities and do what's necessary to bring students where we want them to be. The textbook cycle is another little tidbit, and again, Gail mentioned this as well. Those, those cycles are like in stone, sort of. You know, when you see Steve's projections and he has things that are getting done in so many years and everything's ready. Gail does the same thing with the textbooks. So we know when things are, licenses are expiring. And a lot of those licenses are becoming digital licenses. And then, you know, they have certain resources available with them. But, but those are things we just have to provide, you know, for the educational purposes of the, of the classes. So this year just happened to be a larger cycle, the way things unfolded. And we also didn't arrive at anything for health last year, so that was sort of added onto this as well. And then with technology, we have been using all along edgenuity for any type of credit recovery or things of that nature that people would need to make up credits. It could be somebody who transfers in and they really need to make things up to graduate. So we get them on edgenuity. The problem with edgenuity, although it was great and worked very well for our students, they only allowed for a school license. So we had to pay for everybody, even if they weren't using it. So we did some research and Mr. McCloskey found out that it meant them, you can buy individual licenses. So we can, we were able to reduce that number, you know, significantly and still be able to serve the needs of our students. So again, all of those kind of balance plus and minus and we're able to kind of get us in a really good spot where we can, we feel very comfortable moving forward that things are going to continue to, you know, be enhanced at the high school level.
So I also just want to commend Chris and Connor's leadership in terms of, remember, this is Chris's third second year, right? Connor's third, but Chris's second. And just the, the culture of the school, the vibrancy, you know, is really, it's a great place to be. The feedback that I hear from students and from teachers is that they are ever-present. You know, they feel connected to, you know, to Chris and Connor and that they're really focused on teaching and learning. And so there's been a lot of good pieces. And I think you will see that, you know, when you go into the line items of the high school budget. There are some very specific, you know, instructional pieces in there that I think are critical. You know, the computer lab is a big one. You know, that robot, the robotics program is a major engaging draw for our students. But also the high school's been very innovative in a lot of the things that they're doing. And so the athletic training program, you know, is outstanding. It is an investment, you know, certainly in kind of making that program launch. But that's an important piece. I think another highlight within the budget are the arts programs. You know, again, we have a lot of investment in music there, in instruments and kind of all those things and making sure that every student has an opportunity to engage both in class and outside of class in an activity that keeps them connected to school and keeps them coming to school, right? And so that's really, one of the things I would continue to encourage you to do is to connect the line items. to connect the line items within the budget to the goals of the committee. And I think, you know, when you look at that very closely, you're going to see that those line items are directly connected to the goals that the committee has put forward.
Yeah, the feedback I'm hearing is fabulous job, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you to explain just a little bit in terms, these new programs are amazing also, I'm hearing great feedback in terms of that. When you were mentioning about the honors, they, some were fearful about going into AP. So, are you doing less AP?
Yeah, I think, I think, no, it was just, we're still going to offer, again, it's on the choices for them to choose.
Okay.
The Spanish AP and the French AP. They, again, Spanish AP is going to run again. French AP is probably not because we didn't have enough people to run the course. We can work around that for people. You know, we can always make adjustments to address certain needs. The, the idea is really to personalize education. That's where I think, you know, we really benefit. And, you know, you have to look at what everyone's needs are. And, you know, there are some people where maybe finances are an issue. So, maybe instead of AP exam, they're going to take dual-credit courses because they want to be able to get college credit that they can transfer over and, you know, reduce the number of, you know, classes they have to take at the next level. That works for them in their particular situation. It's our job to make sure that they get the same education, you know, that they need and they can get where they want to go, just as much as the person who wants to take AP because that person may feel that AP is going to look better on a transcript if you're applying to a highly competitive college because they want that college board on there for a college to see because that's what the people who attend their college choice or their number-one choice, target school or reach school for that matter, has on it. So, this was really just a means of trying to address what the needs are in the high school and not lose out on anything else and still trying to keep people involved in all the courses.
Excellent, thank you.
Go ahead, Justin.
Just one more quick comment. So, once again, thank you for the great job you're doing. I'm very happy to hear that, like, the expansion of our AP programs and all that or wide selection for such a small district and such a small high school, I'm very proud that we've been able to maintain this, like, broad choice these kids have. So, I'm happy to hear you reiterate that, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, well, there are 21 AP courses on the course selection sheet right now. So, for a school this size, I think that's tremendous.
And it was not that way even like five, six years ago. So, it's been a really good growth since then, thank you.
Diane?
Do any of our students ever take the ACT or is it exclusively the SAT?
So, the ACT is growing. Again, I, I come from a place where we push students to take both exams. And so, you take both once, right, in the spring of junior year. And whether it's, you know, March and June, May and June, however you want to do it. And then, you see what the exam's like, you see how you do on the exam and then you got to get a feel, like, I test better this way because there are two very different exams, right? One's more competency-based, which is the ACT, and one is a lot more, you know, reasoning-based and, in my opinion, tends to try to trick you a little bit more, but that's just me. I don't want to appear biased. And then, they can choose, hey, I did better on this one, I like this one, I'm going to try again in that test and kind of focus on that one. And then, they can see, you know, about, you know, raising their score in that particular test. So, there weren't very many a couple of years ago, right? I want to say we jumped up a little bit last year. This year, we're even more. I want to say we're close to, if, if my memory serves me correct, I want to say we were like 38 was the last number that I saw, which is a third of the, you know, the class. So, you know, again, I don't think we can look at the number per se without looking at, you know, the percentage of that grade level that's taking it. Because some are going into the workforce, again, some are, you know, going into a two-year school and say, I don't really need it. And some just feel they don't test well and like, I'm going test optional. So, but again, to your point, I do think that it's important to make sure they know about both. And that's been a huge part of our junior parent meeting as we've met with, with them and gone over things. And we even touched on it with the senior parents as well, you know, just to reinforce.
And then, when Mr. McCloskey was describing to us at an earlier meeting, our new program for sports medicine and athletic training, and he mentioned that you'd all be looking for articulation opportunities with post-secondary either at URI. And my question was, I read something just the other day where Rhode Island College has sports management BA or BS. And I was wondering, would there be any overlap there that you would know of or is it too different?
I, to be honest, I don't know. I'd have to look at the, at the regs and see how they match up. I mean, we do have a partnership with Rick. So, we are working and trying to, you know, get more courses and dual-credit course opportunities there. So, you know, if that's something that we can manage, I think it would be easy to facilitate that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, the sports management, from what I know about it, is more, again, like, as the name states, the management side, whereas currently, the program we put together was more for like the practice of becoming a trainer. But it's something we could explore. I don't, I don't think the courses, as we set them up, were structured for that, though.
I have a comment and then my question. So, the comment is, I'm really happy to hear about the integration of the SAT prep in the mariner classes because I know there's a lot of families that will pay to have like an SAT tutor or to have their kids go to like an additional like SAT class. So, if this is something that is now a Rhode Island requirement, but it also, this is going to expand their reading, writing and reasoning skills and also, you know, expand their opportunities post-secondary, I think it's great that it's integrated within the school day.
Yeah, thank you. The, the goal is to get to the point where we can offer it ninth, 10th and 11th in some capacity where they see a connection to it, you know, and they continue to build year after year. And so, those skills will, you know, be measured and we can focus the, you know, the training, you know, the, what they're doing so that it's their needs that are being addressed and we're not just kind of throwing out like a one-size-fits-all. So, that's the goal.
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear that. And then, you know, it's the same question and I'm hoping that when I say, is there anything that's not in your budget that really is needed and necessary for a 21st-century learning environment? And I keep asking Pete about it and he said, I think that Mr. Fiore might, if you ask your question, like, what is really going to make a huge improvement and need? So, I'm hoping you will say that. If not, I'm going to ask about it. But, so that's my question. Is there anything in your budget that maybe while not state-mandated is just something that is in high need, a high priority need?
So, one of the things that we're trying to do is refurbish the library in terms of, you know, some of the...
That's good, that was my, my ask.
The, the furniture and everything, it's just, it's, there's nothing wrong with it. It's perfectly fine. It's, it's just a little outdated and, you know, trying to get more with, as you mentioned, current times and to draw students back in. Look, I'm not saying kids don't use the library, they do. But, again, the, the library has kind of changed a little bit over the years, you know? They don't have to go as much now to do research, even though they do and they learn the process. You know, they have devices where they can do that and they learn that, you know, that way also. So, I think it's about making sure that we can address their needs, their concerns and keep up with our educational philosophy of critical thinking, collaboration, you know, creative problem-solving. So, a lot of the furniture now is just different, right? You have, you know, desks that are individual desks, but they're on wheels and the next thing you know, they fit into a circle or they fit into a larger table. So, things of that nature certainly give our teachers a lot more flexibility in terms of being able to different types of activities, exercises, without losing instructional time with, you know, whiteboards and their tables that have whiteboard surfaces, some of them flip up and then they, you could be standing up and then sitting down the next minute and sharing a table. So, there's so many opportunities to do that. We were fortunate enough to have our PTO, work with the, you know, PTO from the middle school and the elementary school in the spring when they did the beach blanket bidding and we were able to, through that fundraising activity, finance two-thirds of the library. So, we were short for that last piece. So, in order to kind of make it complete and sort of expedite the overall use of that area, you know, that would be a, a major piece of the puzzle that would, that would help, you know, would assist us. It'd probably be, again, just because prices are a little bit, it depends on if you're looking right now or you're looking in July or, or something, but it's going to be approximately $15,000 to be able to complete, completely outfit the rest of the, in addition to the 29 that's already been allocated through the, the fundraising. So, that's the direction that we would go and I think that that would really enhance the, the opportunities for students on their own, students with library staff, students with teachers who would then, you know, reserve spaces and, and make use of it.
Yeah, and again, as a, as a passive observer from the outside, it just looks extremely outdated and it, I'm going to guess it's the same exact, like, adult-looking furniture from like 30 years ago. So, when you look at, you know, it's always having that vision. There was a vision for a very long time for the auditorium, took us like 10 years to get there, but we got there. There was a vision for the athletic complex. There was a vision for the learning-thinking classrooms, the renovations, even like the space we saw at the, the pier school with the very flexible furniture. Sounds like you've got a great vision for like a new computer lab. So, you have to have that vision and I appreciate that you do. And I would just fully support that because, you know, and the furniture, the 21st-century furniture is so expensive and it's not going to make sense to try to get like a piece at a time, a piece at a time. Like, whatever we can do to support the capital plan and support the high school to really go all-in because if you've got some funds right now from generous donations from people that went to the PTO beach bidding and if we can supplement that through the capital plan or, you know, throughout this process and really do like a, a facelift, it's just huge. So, then it's, you know, anytime classes are brought in there, anytime you have meetings in there and faculties gathering in there. And then, are there any classes that are in there, like mariner classes or is it really an open space or do you, are there any classes, like, you know, if it's a mariner class and...
Yeah, they'll use it for like presentation style. They'll use it if they're doing projects and they really need some space to kind of have stu-, you know, small group pairs spread out a little bit and then work within their own group. So, they, they'll definitely use it for different reasons. I think this would make it a lot more attractive because it would give them a lot more options.
Do you think if you did a big 21st-century lift that you would schedule some classes in there, whether it's an advisory or whether it's a mariner class or something, if it's a whole new...
We could absolutely do that because it's big enough where you could have a class run and you could still have other things going on. I mean, we do that now. So, it would actually make it a lot more feasible to do that because, again, just the way the furniture moves and everything, you know, it's just makes it so much easier. It's not as loud, you're not dragging things across the floor, you know, it's not as heavy. So, absolutely, you know, things are on wheels and people are spinning and the next thing you know, they're in a different group, but still working, you know what I mean? So...
Yeah, I would say think big and talk to Pete and then it, it may be like, you know, the, the, the big vision for the big 21st-century learning space, Plan A, this dollar amount, Plan B, like, come up with a Plan A and a Plan B. Don't limit yourself to, well, I got $29,000 from the PTO and if I just had another 15 that I could do, like, you know, think big like we have with other projects because this may be a, you know, kind of like a, could be a, a once-in-a-decade thing, like, just do it right.
Right, that's true.
Instead of trying to piece together and, you know, we'll, you know, work with Pete and we'll see where we can, can go.
Okay.
I think, I don't, you know, I don't know. Again, I'm asking to explore it. I'm not saying, let's add $50,000 to the budget. I'm saying, let's look at...
No, there are other different ideas I have also, like what we did with the athletic complex and different ways to do it through sponsors or different ideas to, in addition, or multiple of ways also through capital gains and that too, as we explore, but yeah.
So, we'll take a look at it. You know, certainly, I know Chris has been working closely with the PTO to develop a vision and getting input from our librarian and from students around what we want that to look like. And so, you know, by the time we finish our workshops, we'll have a, probably a round number two, so you can understand the fiscal impact of that.
Yeah, and I know you have a student group and you've got a great student liaison who can kind of give you some input, like, all right, if I was at the high school, this is what I would, this would be attractive to me as a space that I'd want to go to after school or go to during one of my mariner classes. This would really kind of help me to kind of be excited, enthusiastic to work on my Common App and whatever stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
And then, my other kind of question is, I know you are in the works over the next year about perhaps recommendations for cell phone or policy and all that. Would you ever want to do a pilot of, you know, purchasing some Yonder pouches or a similar product or something to pilot with a small, with a class or with something just to see? I know Marco kind of did a experiment with like, okay, let's see if we can get the, you know, with the phone in the corner. And I know you have a lot of ideas, but I was just curious if that is something that you want to do a test pilot of, like, purchasing some pouches?
Mr. McCloskey and I talk about this very often and the two of us have done a lot of research. So, just, just based on the research and, and talking to some people who have used it, the feedback has not been great on the Yonder pouches because they, there are different ways for students to sort of pry them open and then take their phone out and then just put it back in. A number of students take an old phone and they just put this, the old phone in there that doesn't work and it looks like it's in there, but they really have their phone on them. So, I'm not sure that it's a cure-all and nor do I think anything is. It's all going to be a process that's going to have to be overseen, you know, consistently. So, I'm just, I'm just not sure that that's the way to go with the Yonder pouches. Now, it doesn't mean we can't try it out, you know, if, if that's the direction that people want to go, but we're trying to, actually, Mr., I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about it, but I know Mr. McCloskey's been working on getting the committee together. He's a chair of the committee.
Yeah, so, so there's a lot of moving pieces with this, as I'm sure you all know. But, one of the things we're going to do was get a bunch of different policies from different districts and then bring them together for the, a committee to look at of parents, students and educators and then have them give us feedback. So, I think if there's a real passion from that committee to go in either direction, we could look at exploring those. But, I think we really want to get the feedback and we spoke at lunch, the three of us actually spoke at lunch today about this and we really want to get like the feedback of students, parents and teachers and see what they feel.
And it is not just the high school that's going to be involved. So, we have, you know, some strong interest from middle school students and parents and educators and even elementary parents. And so, you know, Connor is doing this job of kind of including people from across the district. The other, so we will have a policy to recommend to you this spring and so, we do want to go through the right process of having the right input and building consensus before it gets voted on. And then, two, on a parallel course, we do understand that the Rhode Island Legislature is going to be putting something forward. And so, you know, we want to make sure that our policy aligns with state law. And so, we are watching that process as we go through our own to make sure that we don't approve a policy and then have to revise it immediately, right? And so, in the meantime, you know, certainly, there's a lot of really good research out there. I think there is broad consensus within the community, within educators and for many of our students that, you know, the devices are just simply a, you know, an untenable distraction, you know, as life goes on. And, A, I'm gratified that that awareness is building, right? Because if you asked that same question three years ago, I think you would have gotten a really different answer. And then, two, I think there's consensus to do something about it. And so, that is coming.
Yeah, it's interesting and obviously, middle school is completely different from high school, but it's been very interesting at the middle school that I work at. We had a grant, we went all-in on the Yonder pouches, a very strict policy and we were anticipating, oh, the kids are going to break open the pouches, the kids are going to try to trick us by putting the calculators in there and it's going to be a big cluster of dismissal trying to unlock and we, we anticipate all this thing and we were off. What is actually happening is we told the kids, you know, your phone has to go in and you can carry your locked pouch or put your locked pouch in your locker. So, the kids are putting their, their phones in their locker. So, 550 kids, zero phones because the whole thing was messaged, if we see it, it's out of the pouch. And we thought, you know, this is going to happen, you know, all these different things. The kids are keeping their phones in their lockers because they're so, you know, they're rule followers, most of the kids and it's middle, so it's different. And so, you know, the first couple of weeks, if we saw a kid that had their phone in their pocket, it was like, oh, you have to go, you know, to get some reteaching with the assistant principal, call mommy, all that stuff. So, we bought pouches using a grant. We know... We know the kids are not actually using the pouches because out of five-hundred-and-fifty kids, there's only twenty kids that are unlocking their pouch at the end of the day, yet we're seeing out of five-hundred-and-fifty kids, like, the same two kids who struggle, all the other kids, you don't see the phone. We know it's not in the pouch, but it's in their locker and in his way, and we've accomplished what we want.
That's true, yeah.
Of, the kids are not in the bathrooms using it, they're not, you know, and it's very interesting and we're like, okay. And we tried for years to just say, this is our policy, you can't have it, but we allowed kids to keep it in their pocket and they just couldn't, couldn't help themselves. But now that it's like, alright, well, if we see it, it's not in your pouch, you're not following the school committee policy and all that. Very, game changer. And then at two-thirty, when the bell rings and the kids can have it, they're almost, they're literally almost walking into the polls and everything because it's like the first time they've seen their phone in like six hours. It's just, it's very interesting, so...
Yeah, that is interesting.
And it'll be interesting to see how many pouches we get back at the end of the year that are all numbered and everything, but, you know, so we bought pouches, they're not using them because they're not unlocking them. There's like twenty little sixth graders who are, the older kids are not.
Right.
But we don't see the phones all day. So, we ultimately accomplished what we want, but very interesting.
And that's the goal, right? I mean...
That's the goal. And again, you know, our high school has a different experience and middle school is completely different from high school. And our kids have devices, so we don't need to have that phone all the time. If they're doing a Kahoot or other stuff, they have a laptop. They don't need something that like a high school kid might need, but it's very interesting, so...
And it'd be interesting to see how the committee, you know, kind of evolves because maybe it's a multi-tiered approach, you know, of something. So, it'd just be interesting to see what people feel as their needs.
Yes. And it would be very interesting to think about even to pilot at the middle school, much smaller school, much different population, just, it's an interesting thing, but not what we expected. We thought all the other things, they're gonna break them, they're gonna trick us. Nope. They're not using them.
Yeah.
But they, they think they're supposed to, so, yeah. So, that's all. Any other questions? Sorry to get off track, but any other questions for the high school?
All set.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're on to the pier school.
So, for the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six academic year, Narragansett Pier School is enhancing several academic programs to support student learning. We are investing in whiteboard materials and consumables to support thinking classroom methods. In mathematics, we're implementing the illustrative math curriculum across grades five through eight, complete with curricular materials and professional development opportunities for our teachers. Our science program continues to grow with additional OpenSciEd units for grades five through eight, supported by GimsNet professional development and coaching resources. In curriculum and instruction, we're maintaining our commitment to CKLA in grade five and my perspectives for grades six through eight in English Language Arts while adding to classroom libraries and replenishing consumables. The writing revolution initiatives continue to build writing skills across all content areas. For social studies, we've secured a one-year HMH digital license to support ongoing curricular changes. We're evolving our programming with the introduction of a new agriculture program for grades five and six. In foreign language, we're implementing a slight FTE reduction for twenty-five, twenty-six, which will assist us with improved high school alignment planned for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Our assessment approach is changing with the adoption of the iXL Learning Platform across all of our grade levels, which better meets our, meets our diverse student needs while offering greater cost-effectiveness compared to our previous iReady assessment system. Finally, we're making staffing adjustments with a 3.8 FTE reduction primarily affecting grades seven and eight. This strategic staffing realignment corresponds with the projected enrollment decline in these grades.
So, I think this is a good time to highlight and just remind the committee, so we are cutting nine positions across the district, right? And so, that is, you know, a significant reduction in our staff. One of the things, if you recall, that we worked on over the past couple of years was aligning the middle school and the high school schedules. So, we are able to have teachers now be split between the middle school and the high school, particularly our secondary teachers are certified grades seven through twelve. So, there will be some teachers that will be teaching three classes at the middle school and one class at the high school. And again, we appreciate the flexibility of our staff as they kinda make this adjustment. It's also, I think, gonna be good for students because they will certainly have a familiar face, right, as they go forward and, you know, they'll have teachers that know them and know their history. It is hard because we're asking our staff to learn more classes, learn more curricula, be more flexible in that, and so that will take some adjustments. The middle school gets particularly hard with enrollment because you're looking at two different certification areas. You know, grades five and six are an elementary certification, grades seven, twelve are a secondary certification. And so, you can't as easily have, you can, but you can't as easily have teachers flow from seven to eight to five and six and vice versa. And so, Emily and her dean, Ryan Kanzet, have done a great job in kind of thinking about the staffing and kinda how we make that adjustment, but it is hard. There are a number of people that are losing their positions and so it is the reality that we face with declining enrollment and so we'll continue to make those adjustments.
I noticed the new program in agriculture, grades five to six, is also seven and eight involved in the agriculture?
Seven and eight already has some agriculture classes, so we're adding so that we can support our high school programming and have all of our students at the middle school experience agriculture. So, it's been really exciting working with Matthew Pottle, who's come over from the high school to do the seven, eight curriculum. So, I would expect to continue having that partnership with the CT at the high school and building those classes.
And so, you have a teacher that's qualified for five, six?
Yes. Yes, the agriculture certification, if you will, goes five through twelve.
Oh, okay.
And we do know, it's very hands-on, right? And what we know about middle school learners is that experiential is really important, right? And so, it's a great entry gateway into science, Ag itself, but also other elements of science, environmental science, you know, all of those pieces. And so, you know, the students in grades seven and eight have had really positive feedback about taking that course and so we have expanded it.
So, are there, are there, I mean, this is sort of a pilot for five and six, but do you look to expand it to some of our other CTE programs?
So, agriculture is one of the most popular CTEs at the high school, but given that, you know, we are looking at different ways that we can expand into the middle school. It's just, we want to try this with five and six and then look at how we can bring down some of those newer CTEs like mechanical trades or the sports medicine CTE to the middle school. Additionally, you know, we already have our computer science courses at the middle school that support the computer science CTE that's already in place at the high school.
Do the middle school kids ever walk over to the greenhouse when there is part of the Ag stuff?
All the time, all the time.
Oh, good.
And Steve Gormley has been able to put on campus, we have a seasonal greenhouse, if you will, that has the plastic sheeting around it. So, we're just waiting for the wind to die down and we're gonna get that up and rolling.
Any questions for the pier school? I have my same question, again, like, anything that could really enhance or a priority that didn't make it into this level of budget, because I know you had some really hard choices with the, you know, with the enrollment changes and shifts. When you have a small building and you have that many reductions, it's a big impact and that's hard to absorb. So, despite that, is there anything that didn't make it in?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this year, we have implemented the writing revolution and that's really been a part of the district literacy coach's responsibility, Jennifer Loyzelle. She's trained in the writing revolution. My dream would be to have two or three teachers next year participate in that professional development so that we can have in-house experts in the writing revolution because the curriculum there really does impact all content areas. And we've done a lot of strategic professional development with our peers at Pier to really kinda expand that to all contents.
What's the PD look like? Is it in-person training teachers go to? Is it asynchronous online learning? What's the training look like?
There's different ways to access the training. We've been investigating the asynchronous online because that, you know, for ease of flexibility would be nice, but if we could get something in person, that's always gonna be best.
Is that something you've worked with Pete or Gail with like a cost figure? Like, does, or if not, can you, like, is obviously you're asking because there's a financial impact.
Right.
I'm asking, is there something fiscally that you would really think would, you know, benefit students and teachers, but it, so there's, is there a fiscal thing that you'd be able to come back with us to say?
Sure, we'll, we'll cost it out. It is a fiscal impact if they do choose to do in-person, for example. There's travel, there's subs, there's kinda all those different pieces along with the, and the program itself is pricey. And so, we will certainly come back with, for our final workshop, right, with a cost of that.
Okay, absolutely. Anything else? Is that the big...
That's the big ask for this year.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions for the pier school?
Are you eliminating any programs or anything?
Not at this time. We're not eliminating anything. Our staff has been really flexible in maintaining the programming that we have. They feel that they really wanna support the students and their needs, so right now we're not eliminating anything.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least.
Good evening. So, at the elementary school, we're gonna continue to provide supporting the whole child learning. Certainly, it's a pre-K through grade four perspective. We're looking at both academics and social-emotional well-being. With that, I've highlighted some areas and in that you'll see some where our big costs are. So, we continue to follow the multi-tiered support system where we identify our students through using iReady currently to determine their areas of need or their progress in reading and math. So, we're gonna continue that. That's quite a costly piece of my budget. So, if you see in there, it's under the technology piece and assessments. That helps us with both progress monitoring because the kids are allowed to practice in these areas and we find that that's important as they're just learning how to, you know, when they get to third and fourth grade and they attempt the RICAS for the first time. So, this gets them kind of ready for those learning needs and test-taking strategies as well as practicing grade level or where they are academically in reading and math. The second thing for the emotional well-being piece, Everyday Speech, I think I spoke to you at an earlier meeting where we were looking into a digital platform that provided each grade level with very specific SEL, kind of mini lessons, movies, vignettes, where both the health teacher and the classroom teachers are using those and it goes pre-K all the way up to fourth. They love the videos and it also has a higher level, so it's, there's a general ed opportunity and then when we have our kids that need, small group need for social-emotional learning supports, our school psychologist and our speech teachers are able to use that tool as well. Tracy and myself can use that tool as well when sometimes we have little conflicts and we can pull a video up and talk with them and it's very kid-based at their level-based. So, it kinda helps spur our conversation, especially if there's a conflict. You'll see in my budget, there's staffing in alignment with enrollment projections. I didn't have a lot of changes in my enrollment projec-, in my staffing. I, based on our two spots of kindergarten this year, will need two first grades, so I had to close a first grade, but I'm gonna open a kindergarten based on our enrollment numbers coming up from preschool. So, it's kind of a wash there. We plan to decrease our Spanish teacher point two. That's in accordance with what the needs are. We're not going to be offering Spanish to our preschool students because a forty-minute block of Spanish for preschool is not very fun, not for them at all. It's very difficult. So, that's kind of an area. With that, our decrease in looking at preschool numbers, and I'm gonna follow back on that in a minute, what we anticipated is that we'd need five preschools based on our, you know, birth rate and all of the information that we had gotten. And I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute with Tammy. And increase the K teacher. And with that, it also kinda shuffles some teacher assistance. Based on programming, you'll see that I've decreased a preschool TA for the programming and some special ed TA support and, but we've increased a point six in kindergarten. So, it's all to support the kids and where the needs are, where the shuffling's been. Also, for scheduling, we've been allowed to support some of our opportunities for enrichment. If you see, we've talked a little bit about our morning movement before school, that's expanded to four days a week and that's amazing. We have high attendance in that. Our art teachers picked up a morning or two doing sunrise sketching. We have coding and robotics before school with the help of Vanessa, our tech coach. And we also have a classroom teacher that's interested in doing some more robotics and we just received a grant for some robots. And we're also talking to the PTO about some other different kind of robots so we can hit different grade levels too. So, we're in, we're looking into some earlier child robots and some more sophisticated ones. We're anticipating next year running a games club, which it's, it sounds, we have a couple ideas about that, but just, even just learning how to play games, like the typical card games, Sorry, Trouble, and then some Chutes and Ladders, oh, but just to really kind of foster some of that collaboration and cooperation in a fun way. And continue book clubs, our librarian now has been pulling some third and fourth graders that come and have been really enjoying that old-school book clubs. So, we wanna continue those. And of course, we're gonna continue to address all of our academics, our content for ELA. We're gonna continue with CKLA and you'll see in the budget, you know, we have to continue to purchase workbooks. We don't really have textbooks, we have some skills books, but once you purchase them, we don't need to replenish. We are enhancing our classroom libraries a little bit to support the CKLA program. So, some of the content, it's very content-driven in the knowledge area, so we're trying to find student easy, fun reading to, you know, go with that. So, you'll see a little bit in that, in my budget. For math, we're gonna continue with Bridges. It's been a very successful program for us. That's really basically a workbook cost. However, we are gonna continue to enhance our building-thinking classrooms. We're talking about some desks that we have, but we have that already in the budget to look at for this year. And we've purchased some whiteboards and we, we're kind of in a good place for that. And we've had amazing success with building-thinking classrooms and our kids really doing collaborative problem-solving, so that's been nice. And then for science, that's our, one of our biggest ticket items on our budget because we have to do the materials and the professional development. And you'll see that annually, that tends to be one of our big items. And we continue to just enhance our, our whole child, looking at, you know, if you look at the way we're doing our scheduling for all these extra activities and then built into the schedule, we have band and chorus and theater. And then we also have our media, which Mr. Jennings, Brian Jennings, who works at the high school, still works with us, and he's continuing to do work with all grades in project-based, but he also tends to focus on some of our third and fourth graders doing just little movies and vignettes and things like that to support our students. So, that is what I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Is the Spanish teacher gonna be one of the ones that go up to the other grades? Like, up to the other schools?
So, we haven't done the job placement yet.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, you know, certainly she would have that opportunity if she chose.
Okay.
Well, I have my same question, again, is there anything that's not in the budget that really could be a high priority, improve the experience for students and...
Yeah, so, so here's my thing, and this is really extreme. So, we did our, with Jill, we did our calculations for preschool and we were thinking we'd have seventy-five and with that, within that seventy-five, we have to leave X amount of spaces open for the early intervention. for the early intervention. So yesterday, Jill and I met, and we have 69 filled and paid for, done. We have to leave open spots for EI, and we have 11 students on the waiting list. So I may need to ask you for another preschool classroom, even though I asked originally, when I was doing my budget, that we weren't going to need this. So that is a big ask, but to have our local students on a waiting list, and these are our local students, these are not additional.
So it'd be, it's a budget ask now, but it would be a budget neutral, because you have six.
I have six.
And based on the data and projections, you thought you could go down to five.
We did.
But now the data and projections are showing that we should maintain the six.
Right, and that just came up because we just finalized, I mean, they were supposed to have their applications in and their paid and their deposits and everything, so, you know, that's where we're at.
And would you also need the additional teacher assistant back?
Yes, we would.
All right, well, that's a Pete and Karen thing, again, because it's, you know, obviously it'll circle back to us, but.
It's, it's good news.
It's, it's a good problem, it's a good problem to have, that we have a waitlist.
Yes, of 11, and if class is 15.
Yes, I mean, it's, I'm sure.
That's the problem we want to have.
We want to have the problem.
Yeah, it's a good thing, especially because anything we can do to grow our kindergarten and provide a high-quality preschool education, because if the kids live in town and they're going to be part of the school system in kindergarten, and if we can't offer them our high-quality seat, they're going to find something else or not do anything, and then that's going to be not great for kids. So that'll be, it's a good problem. It's a big ask, but it's not a wish. It's a, okay, we either leave kids on the waiting list and they're going to turn to other options.
Right.
Or we keep the kids that live here and offer them high-quality programming, and we just have to figure out the funding piece with that.
Right.
And, you know, as we, you know, if we have to do, it's interesting, you know, idea when we circle back to the town council of like, we have a great problem that we want to solve. We thought we were going to come in at this dollar amount, but our ask might be changing. You know, we're not going to shift that big thing because we want library furniture and other stuff, but like, this is a, this is a real ask. So it's, it's interesting. So it'll be good to hear back from Pete and Karen, but I'd love to hear from the rest of the committee about like, yes, do you definitely want Pete and Karen to look into this, or like, nope, who cares, leave them on the waitlist? Not who cares, but you know what I mean? It's a, it's a big dollar amount when you're talking about adding a teacher and a teacher assistant back in. So Pete and Karen need some direction about, please look into it, or?
Yeah, I mean, for, for my benefit and for those that are listening at home, can we just like talk maybe like for a minute or two about?
Is your mic on?
About the preschool and about like, you know, the benefit of having children come through our preschool program.
Sure. We have an amazing preschool program. We have the Five Bright Stars Award, and our teachers worked very hard to acquire that. Our preschool focuses on, once again, the whole child. So they come to our school as babies, three-year-olds who walk in. It, it's just amazing to have them walk in the doors, and within, within two weeks of school, they are in our school. Like, they run the place. They walk in and they know where they're going, and they are in their classrooms with their buddies, and some of them are three-year-olds, some of them are four-year-olds, and some of them are five-year-olds. And they are integrated in that age group for a particular reason. We've asked the teachers, do you want to just do three, four-year-olds and four, five-year-olds? And they're like, no, we like growing our kids, and they become our role models and our peer models. We are able to offer really high-quality, just academic play in the preschool, where they follow Boston, Boston Public Schools. Literacy, and then, and math. They are working also in a variety of math programs, but Bridges is, is a, is a connection to what we already have in the elementary school. So it's really a well-thought-out program. For social-emotional learning, they're still working through with conscious discipline, but they're also enhancing it with the everyday speech. They are working diligently on all kinds of social-emotional skills of just everyday how to play in a playground to how to play at a sand table, and, and they do lots of science, hands-on experiments. And it, it's just one of the most amazing programs I'm so happy to be part of and to go in these classrooms every single day to see how much these kids grow from age three to five to get into school. And what Pete was saying earlier, we have seen a trend where kids, when they come in, and they may need a little bit of speech support or whatever, and by the time they get to, it's more of the second, third, fourth grade, kids that we saw that had emotional dysregulation or speech needs or just some delays, how quick they are in with their peers by like second grade, solid. And for those that need the additional support, they're just included, because they've been with these kids since they're babies. They don't know any different of how to include everybody. So it's just a really great program, and, you know, I can't say enough about it.
So one of the things that I think is really critical to remember is that we have highly-trained expert teachers that are dual-certified.
Yes.
In, you know, early childhood education and special education, and so.
Which is very unique to our program.
Which is very unique. And so we were very intentional about building the model in that way, so we could meet the, you know, various needs of children as they come in. We are one of the few preschools in the state that are certified with five stars in Bright Stars, so it's the highest one that you can possibly get by an outside accrediting, accrediting organization. And, you know, I think it does meet a need in the community, you know? So we do kind of see lots of parents wanting to be a part of our preschool, because they do feel like it kind of meets the needs of their children going forward. And so, you know, again, I, I really appreciate you asking, right? Because one of the things that we know from research, and when you kind of go into the research across the country and literally across the world, one of the keys to long-term success, right, is high-quality preschool education, right? And so, you know, and we spend a lot of time thinking about AP classes and college-level classes, kind of all those things, and those are incredibly important. Just as important is the other end of the scale, right?
It's kind of how we get them there.
Right, and that is how we.
Yeah, I like that bridge between preschool and AP classes.
There you go.
There's more in common than you would think sometimes.
Jill, based on past year's application patterns, do you anticipate there'd be a good chance that we'd get up to 15 by the fall from the 11?
We only open registration on February 4th, so it's spent a little over three weeks, and that's how quickly we filled up. I, I did have numerous parents that do email me throughout the year, like, what is the date that it's going to be open? And I had quite a few, and, yeah, everybody kind of got in their information, they sent in their deposits, and then I've had parents trickling in. Over vacation, we had quite a few people come in.
I think that's a great question, Diane, and that's really.
And then over the summer, we do get probably, we get some that enroll over the summer also.
So February 1st, it opened. It's been, you know, three and a half weeks, and we already met capacity and already have 11 people on a waitlist.
Yes.
Like, that's a good problem to have, but we need to figure out how to meet the needs of the kids.
It happened quick.
Quicker than ever.
Quicker than ever, which is good.
Yes.
I just think also, based on past years, we've had huge, like, waiting lists also.
Yeah, I think because since we've opened, you know, this, we started seven, we maintained six, which is a good thing. It's out there, we have families that call when the kids are one and a half and they want to get on the list, you know? So it's, it's, it's great, and I think word has spread at how successful it is and, you know, how great it is. So it's the best, best option in town.
Yeah, and last year was a big year with the formal five-star accreditation and the investment we put in the new playground.
Yes.
All right, so that is the ask. That was at elementary, and that's a combined ask from special services and?
Yeah, you can combine, that's, that's.
Yeah, sure. Two administrators, three administrators, yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, do any school committee members or any questions about any of the people that presented tonight, or any information that you want Pete to bring back for the next meeting? Any kind of final questions, final thoughts for any of the people who presented or for Pete or Karen?
Did you ask us if we want them to consider, we have to, we don't have to vote on any of that?
There's no, there's no voting tonight, but if there's anything that you heard from any of the administrators that really is something that you really want to be seriously considered, like, definitely like let?
The preschool, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, I concur with that. I mean, it's, it's important to build a solid foundation for our students.
And I agree. I think you're hearing some pretty clear consensus that we'd like you and Karen to really kind of look seriously at that. And it's making it back to budget neutral, but you have to find the money, but it was, you know, six preschool teachers and teacher assistants. That was going to go down to five, but it's just putting it back.
We know how we, we, we are more right than wrong, but everything we do is an estimate until the numbers actually come in. So in this case, they came in more in our favor compared to previous years where we've just been, seemed to be hemorrhaging kids, so.
And I agree with that, and then I would want to put a shout out for all of the asks, but definitely for like the high school library, because when you're looking at a $30 million budget or a million dollars a year in capital, you know, a difference of $15,000 could be huge, especially if it, when it's coupled with very generous donations and you can do it at the same time. You know, and the, the PD, it's, it's if you have teachers that are very interested in some very specific training that can really improve students' literacy skills, and then we can build a train, the trainer model and all that, like it's, you know, and, and sometimes we get the right people that are interested and you train them, it's a, it's a huge investment. And obviously, huge difference between in-person with a real trainer versus an asynchronous thing when you've got all sorts of competing demands. But I'm sure you and, and Pete will come up with kind of an option A, option B, and we'll see, see what we can do. So I think all of the, the additional asks are all great, you know, high-priority things, and that's what, that's what we want to hear and try to figure out. All right, any closing remarks, Pete, before we close?
You know, I'll just, A, I appreciate the hard work that goes into the budget. You know, again, these budget kind of overviews are, and requests are aligned to the goals of the committee, right? And so remember, you know, you're really focused on high academic achievement, right? We want students to have a sense of belonging. We want to have high-quality staff, and we want to have innovative programs, right? And I think you heard a lot about, a lot about that tonight. You know, there are some additional cuts that weren't covered tonight in the specific schools, so I just want to remind everyone, you know, we are eliminating the position of social-emotional learning coordinator, right? And so that is someone that cuts across schools. And so we do have significant staff reductions this year in response to declining enrollment. And so I appreciate, A, the kind of creative thinking and often difficult decisions that our, you know, building and program leaders have had to make, right, in order to make those adjustments. You know, we hire thoughtfully and well, and we don't like to let anyone go, but unfortunately, we're in that situation right now. We are fortunate that we have had several of our senior staff choose to retire, and so we've been able to open up some positions for some of our newer staff to be able to stay on, so that has been a good piece. You know, and I'm thankful to both our support staff union and our teachers union, who have really partnered with us, kind of going through that staff reduction process. So our next workshop will be more kind of the next ring out from the classroom, so we'll be looking at technology, transportation, facilities. Am I missing anything? I don't think so.
Transportation.
And transportation, thank you. And so we'll be going over those at our next workshop. If you can come to consensus on our next workshop that you're kind of satisfied where the budget number will be, while we do have on the books a third budget workshop, if you decide that we don't need to do that, you know, we would kind of stop at two. If we do, if you can't come to consensus at the end of the second workshop, we do have an opportunity to meet for a third workshop should we need to.
I think that was a, a good summary. So for our new committee members, you can expect very much the same type of, you know, the staff will present, will ask questions. And then the only difference with next week is we're hoping that after we hear from those departments, that Pete may be able to circle back to, okay, in the first one, we heard requests about the preschool, library furniture, professional development, here's what I can give you options. We could do all three of those things, and then Pete and Karen will say, it'll either increase the whole overall thing by this much, or I think we can shift some other, you know, we don't have to put as much money in, you know, this line item or other, okay, we thought that these renovations were going to come in for this, and now they came in for that, so I can shift some of that capital money, whatever. You know, so Pete will kind of give us some, I think we can do all of those at this dollar amount, or, well, we can do this and this, but if you really want that preschool, we've looked all around, but we can't find that without increasing the overall budget by $100,000 or, you know, whatever. And then we'll kind of think about that, and then in March is when we vote. So March won't be a big presentation, it'll be, okay, the budget that's before you tonight has all of the things that we wanted, and this is the dollar amount to approve and then move forward with the town council. Or Pete may say in March, you know, I, the preschool teacher's not in here, so you can either vote on it without the preschool teacher or tell me to put it in, like, we'll, we'll, we have to give Pete some direction the next time we come, so then when they present in March, it's really those final budget numbers, so. So very similar next week to this, where the no-voting, informal, back and forth, direction for Pete. And then it may be, for example, say, you know, a very simple explanation is, the budget is there, then I ask them the same questions, and Steve's like, you know, it didn't make it in the budget, but we absolutely really need one more minibus or something. And then we have to say, we have to decide like, well, that'd be great, or whatever, and then they have to kind of figure that out, but, so. Very similar, it'll be same time next Wednesday, 6 o'clock. Pre-meeting upstairs if you're interested. Okay. All right. So is there a motion to adjourn at 7:50?
Second.
All in favor?